Good afternoon and welcome to the regular December meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission. And Brenda, we do have a quorum, so we can proceed. Before we get into the agenda, I want to, first of all, thank Paul Cross, who has left us for all the years of assistance that he gave to this commission. And I want to welcome Bill Jakes to my left, who is going to replace him. And Bill doesn't know this, but I'm going to ask him to just do a minute or two of a little bit of background on where he lives and where he's from.
Okay, thank you, David. I appreciate the welcome and so happy to be joining you all on this commission. I feel like I have quite a few friends here already, friends and neighbors. I do live in, well, next door to the historic zone. My property line is actually the border of it, but also own property inside the district. And I'm just a big fan of our local architecture and our history. And that's, you know, really the thing that drew me to the downtown to begin with. That's why I moved downtown. So I'm just, let's see, I'm also a local realtor, the part about me. You can tell, you did catch me off guard. But, so I do sell and work in this area quite a bit. I've remodeled a number of homes myself and, you know, I think I bring kind of a nice cross-section of experience to this board. And I appreciate you welcoming me. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Bill. I realized that being a realtor, you wouldn't have any problem saying a few thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, then, the next item is to approve the minutes of the August meeting. Unfortunately, we did not get those, the board did not get those, so I'm going to postpone those to the next meeting. And Robert, you want to go over the first of the new business we have today?
Sure. Chairman Becker. Our first item on the agenda is 443 East Main Street. Property owner Dina Young is requesting to add in addition to the rear of the house, replace the fence, and remodel the detached garage that's behind the house. This property is located on the north side of East Main Street, just three lots from the intersection at Highland Avenue. The house was constructed circa 1910 in the four-square with O.G. arched windows, porch, paired bracket, diamond paned upper sash. And it's a brick two-story home with hip style type of architecture. It is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. Now, the property in question is at 443 East Main Street. Like I say, they're wanting to add in addition to the rear of the house that would include a breakfast and utility room with an attached breezeway leading to a two-car carport. A wooden non-privacy fence is going to be added to the sides of the house with the gate across the driveway. And a detached garage will receive a facelift. And it's going to be with the elimination of a second door on the garage and a replacement of the remaining existing garage door. Renderings of the additions and renovations have been included in your agenda package. And I want to scroll down here with some pictures on the screen here and show you, this is the house itself. Whoops, a little bit too fast. This is the adjacent house toward east, toward square. And this is the house on the opposite side of the current house. This is, these are drawings of the proposal with the property, showing the carport in the back with the new addition attached to the city, to the existing house. These are different perspectives of the house and the additions. This coming out the back with the two-car carport coming in from the right view and then from the rear. And then the approximate view from the street. These are the garage doors up in the corner of the screen here with, that they're proposing to add to the garage when they remodel that with the fence, the fencing coming out from the house. Different perspectives. And I'm guessing that this is going to be the kind of doors that they are, they're proposing for the garage and the proposed fencing. And the applicants in the audience, if you have any questions of her or me, I'll be happy to add to.
Ms. Young, would you like to come to the podium and add anything that you want to what Robert said at this point?
Well, it's just a pleasure to live in this house. All of the light fixtures, all of the plumbing are original to the house. We're replacing some of them, but with same-period fixtures. It's got wind scotting on the inside and all of that sort of thing, but you're mainly interested in the outside. And I want the fence, when we put it up, to be appropriate to the 1910 era. It won't be a privacy fence or anything like that. It's going to be an old-fashioned open-work kind of fence, just to keep the dog in. And I'm excited about what Steve has proposed for the garage because it is an original fixture and there's a lean-to on it. We're taking the lean-to off and then he is, as you can see in the pictures, he's going to resurface the outside and put a cupola on the top. And it will have the wooden garage door on it, which will extend down. And it should look very appropriate to the period. We've placed the carport in the back so it would not be seen from the road, so as to change the old view and the antique quality of the home. And my goal is to keep it as close to the way it was built, in spirit as possible. I started refinishing the windows and the front doors this summer. And since the woodwork is quarterson oak on the doors, and I went around to the big window there on the side, and it was some other kind of wood, but I matched the paint on the window to the doors. And eventually, I'll have all of the windows on the main floor done, but somebody else is going to have to do the second floor. I'm too old to get up on the ladder. But interestingly enough, when I took the paint off, there had been dark paint on the woodwork originally on the windows. So I feel like I'm headed in the right direction in my ideas for the restoration.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board?
I have some questions, Ms. Young. I just, when I'm looking at your drawings, the renderings, I'm a little bit confused about the addition on the back. Is that all, is that, are those glass? Is that all glass?
I think it's stucco siding. I think it's stucco siding on it.
Stucco siding.
Yeah, it has a back porch on the house right now that's in very bad state of repair. It would have to come off regardless because it's not safe. But it, there was no laundry room or utility room or anything like that downstairs. And so we wanted to add a room on the back for storage and, you know, vacuum cleaners and things like that, and a little breakfast room. And then the, there's a little stairway going down to the ground, which would enter into the carport. And then he's going to put windows that have the diamond panes in it to replicate what is on the rest of the house.
Okay, okay. So all the open things I see under the arches, those are all going to be?
Yeah, that's open. That's open, yeah.
And then the, evidently you've been able, or you feel confident that you'll be able to match the blonde brick of the house?
I think so.
That you're going to use on the breezeway, so to speak?
Yes, yes. And, well, actually, I think that is stucco on the breezeway. But it's my understanding, I may look at the drawing again, just to make sure I'm not telling you and giving you incorrect information. It's my belief that his plan includes-
I see it now. I'm mistaken.
-brick of similar color and texture as the original. Yes.
Is the shed area on the back that you're going to tear down, that was added to the home later?
Yes. It's not, it's not part of the original garage.
Okay. The, Rob?
Excuse me.
Did, what portions of that addition, do you think the whole thing is visible from the street, or is it just the, actually, the detached garage that's?
There will be a little bit of, if you look really hard, there will be maybe this much of the carport.
The addition?
Yeah, the carport, but the addition is behind the house.
Yeah. Looks like the addition, you'll be able to see some of it, not all of it. The carport looks like you may be able to see most of the sides.
Uh-huh. And it's my plan to have some kind of shrubbery or something there.
Soften it.
Yes. There actually, it's not shown in here, but there is a gigantic dogwood tree in that area. And so I don't think that it will be a problem, but, you know.
The reason I was inquiring was whether or not, if she were just doing that portion of it, would it still be eligible or be required to be coming before us because the staff determiner is visible from the street or not?
Well, if you, this lower left-hand, the lower right-hand picture where it says "aproximate view from the street,"
Uh-huh.
That's about the only one that, you know, you'd be able to, and from the opposite side as well, you'd be able to see some.
Yes, and there is, on the property line there, there's a row of trees. And there is the smaller white house, which is not very far from the existing house. I think you would really have to look pretty hard to see.
Could you go back to that photo that-
Yes, that one.
-showed the front of the house, the street, the photo part?
That one. Nope. That one, yes. You can see-
This one?
Yes, you can see-
All this.
All that stuff, yes.
Now, that's the house. That's the adjoining house.
That's the house toward the college side, yeah.
So the one, the front view of the home that's in question, is that, where was that photo?
Where, which way am I going here? Here we go.
There it is.
This is the front.
Yes, yes.
So it's, you know, from the street view, it's really-
It's hard to see.
It's hard to see that it would be there.
Well, I think from this-
I have no objection to planting more trees or something, you know.
I was just, I was just trying to determine the criteria of why you would be requesting the addition here because of it not being visible from the street.
Oh, I see.
Well, I think to think about something being visible, you have to not think about landscaping. Landscaping is temporary. And so that is not, just because there's landscaping there now does not mean that it would not be visible from the street at some point in the future. So you have to think about what could be visible from the street without landscaping and without the fence that you're adding. So that's, that's important. And then looking at the drawing of the new garage, you have a cupolo on it, I believe?
Yes.
Is that something that you want to add, or is that there already?
It's not there at this time.
Looking over the guidelines, and we talk about roof shapes. Roof should be visually compatible by not contrasting greatly with roof-shaped materials, orientation of surrounding buildings. So I just wonder if a cupolo is necessary, or if it's a feature that's-
Not really. Not really. It's not on my priority list.
Okay.
I agree with you. Yeah, I had that same question myself.
Okay.
I think that's, not with the style of the house.
Okay.
And obviously, the garage was added sometime later.
I think so.
Yeah, because it's got aluminum and-
It is framed in with true two-by-fours, though, so it does have some age. I don't know how much.
Chairman, in how many pieces do you think we should have a motion regarding her request? Should we have, deal with the garage and deal with the addition, or is there?
Well, we can do two. We can do the addition and then the carport by itself, and then the garage by itself.
Is there anything we need to discuss about what she intends to do at the front with the new curving and the concrete slab for the HCR, HDB?
Air conditioning units, yeah.
Okay, that's hard to see from that drawing.
She's looking at sheet. What sheet number are you on there?
Right here.
Uh-huh. Yes.
The HVAC units are currently there, right?
Yes.
Oh, they are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't see those when I went past.
They're not very pretty.
They're just adding a new flagstone walk to the driveway. And that's coming off that semi-circular thing.
And you needed a new step down, right?
Yes, it's, it's, it's kind of a large step up onto that little circular porch. And we always park in the driveway and go, and it just, it needs a little help there, so.
The one question I had, to the west of the current garage, there's an outbuilding?
Yes.
Are you going to remove that?
There are two outbuildings. One is actually one of the, I guess you'd call it a portable shed that probably came from Home Depot or someplace like that. And then next to it is another kind of a ramshackle shed that probably we would take down. And I'm, and if it's possible, what I would like to do is just move that Home Depot shed over to the west side of, the west of fence area, where it would be behind the trees and it would be, not be in the view.
Do I have a motion?
Do you want to deal with the detached, which one do you want to deal with first?
We'll, we'll deal with the addition and the detached, I mean, the carport.
I would make a motion to approve a request for the addition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? That motion carries. And now we'll look for a motion on the renovated garage.
I would move that we, go ahead. I'd move that we accept her proposal for the garage minus the cupola.
That'll be fine.
And I think that the, does anyone, I should have asked this first, objections to the new doors? I don't have any. So I move that we accept the proposal for the garage minus the cupola.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me ask for, after the second time for discussion, just a brief bit, but I just want to make sure, we don't have any samples of materials you talk about in the drawings.
Oh, oh.
There's mention of samples, but we don't, we don't have samples here.
No.
And they're not described in the narrative. So I would just want to make sure that the materials are appropriate.
Sure.
Be it stucco or wooden doors or whatever, you know, something that would not be inappropriate for the historic district.
Yeah, well, the things we use will be as are in the pictures of the garage. It'll be typical kind of carriage house look.
Okay.
Regarding the fence, I guess that would be, that be, do we need to make a motion on the-
Separate piece.
Separate piece.
Well, okay, well, let's stay with the garage first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We'll jump to the fences, the number, number three.
Okay.
But it does mention that the garage will be a stucco finish.
Should we call the question?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the garage with the removal of the cupolo. And we have a second, and any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? That motion carries. The last motion would be the wood fence.
Is there a fence there now?
There is a privacy fence, as you're looking at the house, on the right-hand side, which is pretty much falling down. And there's chain, there's privacy fence going down the right-hand side. As you may have noticed, the lot is quite long, and it goes back to the back of the garage. And then on the left-hand side, there is a hedge going back to the back of the house, and then chain-link fence going all the way back to the back, left-hand corner of the property. And it goes behind the garage.
Okay, because I couldn't see that.
Yeah.
So you're going to tear down the chain-link fence?
Well, if it, if it is still in good shape, I'd like to keep it.
I see.
But the privacy fence will have to go. It's in bad shape.
Are there any areas where new fencing that does not exist currently would be added?
There will be a fence across the driveway. And it will, it's going to start on Barbara-
Deaton. Deaton.
Deaton's. She's got a fence that's going back across to the property line. And I would like for ours to start there and go across to the back of the house and to keep the continuity of the line of the fencing, rather than have hers back at one area and then ours up closer to the road. I don't think that would be attractive.
So you'll have a gate installed there? Will it have a kind of opener mechanism?
Probably, yes, yes.
Okay.
And I'm hoping, just to put a section of fence in front of the air conditioning units also, because they aren't pretty. And we've got some gutters there on the ground and a few things that we kind of have to work around. But I think that certainly that they could be made, it could be made a more attractive area.
Absolutely. That could screen some of those items. And so Deaton's fence is north of the front of their home. I'm just trying to picture.
It kind of goes back, can you pull up the picture of her house?
Yeah.
Find my picture.
Is that the other?
Keep going. Another, keep that one there. You see? You see how it's back around that?
Almost to the rear of their-
Yes. Yes, and I just don't think it would look good to bring our fence any closer to the road than hers.
I think that's a good choice.
Good job.
I was going to ask you a question about the gate.
Mm-hmm.
In this sample right here, is the gate going to be taller than the fence? Is it going to be the same height?
I would have, I haven't talked to the gate people yet, but I was thinking of it being about the same. There might be a little, a small arch, but it won't be, excuse me, it won't be, you know, horrifically tall or-
Same style and everything?
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
Then you're going to use that same style in the back exit of the house, of the property? Great, okay.
The, yeah, the doors to the garage, they are going to be wooden?
I don't know what material they will be. They will certainly look like wood.
And they'll have that arched?
Yes.
That's shown in the picture?
Yes.
If, is the commission okay with something other than wood for doors? Or are you expecting metal doors, wooden doors matter?
Yeah, I was assuming they would be wooden doors. We've had this discussion for other, other homes in trying to keep with the period. Does anybody else have that recollection? Gibb, do you?
I think, you know, material that's appropriate to the time period is fine. Wood would be-
Okay.
Is that what you're thinking, were you thinking?
Yes, yeah.
It's wood.
Mm-hmm. I think we've looked at some other material, but obviously aluminum would not-
Oh, no.
Be.
I would add that the existing doors are aluminum and not attractive. And even, and I'm not so certain how available a wooden door is going to be. It might have to be some composite material, a solid wooden garage door. Could be a difficult thing to accomplish. But I understand the intent.
Yeah, I don't remember the material that we've, we've approved other material for garage doors.
It would, it would look as if it were wood from the street. It's not going to be, you know, brass or shiny aluminum.
You might check with the, it used to be the Cantrell House, but it's now the Smith House.
Okay.
Across the street. That, I'm not, I don't remember what material that is, but it has a similar look to what you have.
Okay.
Might check and see what that material is.
All right.
Any other comments on the fence? Any other issues? I'll take a motion then.
Move that we accept as proposed.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? And the final motion carries. And thank you, Dina and Michael, for coming back closer into the historic zone and what you're doing to help improve the property.
Thank you, thank you. I'm very happy to be here.
Okay, Robert, our next item?
Next item is 449 East College Street. Mary Baughman is requesting to demolish the existing house at that current address. This property is located on the north side of East College Street, four lots away from the intersection at Highland Avenue. The house was constructed circa 1890 in the Queen Anne cottage style with a hip roof, cross gables, and a gabled front porch. This house is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicant purchased the home a few months ago and had planned- The applicant purchased the home a few months ago and had plans to remodel the home. During the inspection of the home, uh, it was determined that there was fire damage in the attic of the house that caused the roof to sink, and it will need extensive repair. The siding needs to be replaced, and the foundation has to be repaired along with other work that needs to be done inside the home. After speaking with several contractors and obtaining quotes for these repairs, it was recommended that it'd be more cost-effective to rebuild a new home on the property than to repair the existing home. As a result, the owner is requesting to demolish the house and construct a new home in its place. In the future, uh, they'll have to submit plans for a new home that will be, uh, at a later date if this is approved. Photos of the house, of the outside of the house and inside the home have been included in your agenda package. Photos of neighboring properties on both sides of the subject property are also included. The applicant, uh, and, uh, is in the audience and will be available to answer any questions the commission may have regarding this request.
Just for clarification, since they're not marked in our packet, the last three pictures is, are of what the house currently looks like.
Right. And I took the liberty of adding a lot more photos, and I can go through here and just show you that this is what the house looked like prior to the, the sale. And the asphalt siding that was on the, the house on the sides and, and in the gable here has been removed. The foundation has, was covered up with metal, like a metal flashing, and that's been also removed. And this is the neighboring property toward the square. This is a neighboring property toward the college. And this is the current house, as it is today. This is a view from the street. Another view from the street, you can tell where the, there was blocks just laid in there and some rock. The picture of the corner of the house. It's hard to tell from this angle, but you can tell the, the difference in slope, that there is a slope to the, to the, to the flooring. And this is the side toward the college. This is another view from the front. And then a closer up, close-up view of the, of the foundation and the front porch of the property. Another picture of the, of the corner of the front of the property. This is inside the attic. The, uh, there's a mailbox.
Strange place.
Yeah, it is, I'm not sure why it's there. But the house has, uh, had caught fire and the beams, and there was some fire damage to the roof. And this is, actually, this is underneath the house. You can see the vent of the house right here.
That's still the attic.
Huh? There's still the attic? Okay, this, okay, it's still the attic then.
The vent, the crawl space about twelve inches, I don't think you have.
Oh, you, that's true, you're right. Okay, so this is a vent of some kind, maybe it's just up there. But that's the attic. This is another view of the rear of the property, uh, along the backside. And this is a up-close view of the roof from, on the backside of the property. And you can see where the, there's a wavey motion along the roof, where it's been, where it's settling places and some hasn't. Another view of the front of the house with the, like I say, this is adjoining property on the, on the west and adjoining property. Oh, this is the house. Different pictures of it. And this is a neighboring property to the, to the east. This is a rear picture of the, from the backyard, looking at the house. And that's some property information, so.
Could you go back to the property information, please? Could you go back to the property information, please?
No.
And I got, I can hand this out, matter of fact.
Ms. Baughman, while Robert's looking for that, would you like to add anything to what he's said so far?
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing, so I don't always understand all that you're saying.
Okay, I just asked if you wanted to, if you wanted to add anything to what Mr. Lewis has said.
First, I'd like to say that, um, when I bought this house, you know, most of you know where I already live, it's only four houses away. And just to give you a short update, that particular block in Murfreesboro is, as far as I'm concerned, other than Linda's, that's one of the nice ones there. But, um, you know, we have everything from very, very modern to very old. And I'm from one, I love, I love Murfreesboro and I like downtown. So when I bought this at auction and saw it, I thought, oh, well, I can rehab that, even though it had a fire in the attic. My other house had a fire in the attic, we, we took care of that. But, um, somebody has to start fixing up that block. And so when I went to the auction, uh, I thought, hmm, it's a little house, I can do this. The auctioneer said it was built in nineteen twenty. When I closed on it, it was, says nineteen seventy-eight. When I went back, I have all the, all the old deeds from the beginning of the sale of the property. And the house had a tenement house built sometime in eighteen seventy. So it's been butchered up from there, added to, probably had an outhouse, septic tank, that sort of thing. And the bathroom that was added actually was part of a side porch. These things, I, after I bought it at the auction, I found this out. And when I took the tin siding off of the foundation, I found, as you can see in these pictures, it's just an assortment of concrete blocks and rocks and whatnot. It really doesn't have a good foundation. So it, in order to address the roof, I didn't want to do it and then go back and do the foundation and pull everything loose again, because two corners of the house have dropped considerably, as I'm sure Robert can tell you he saw. It was kind of like, okay, where do I start here? So I have had at least a half a dozen different people. Randy has built houses and things for me downtown. He built the house on Manny and Burton and made it fit the neighborhood very nicely back in, what, two thousand, two thousand four, someplace around there. And, and it still looks like it belongs. And so when I got to getting estimates, um, I have a couple of them there. I have one that came today. Now, what I'm asking is to let me demolish this thing, because apparently from what people, the different workers and contractors have come, it's gonna cost me as much or more to rehab this as it would to put in a brand-new one. So I'm gonna end up, if I can't demolish it, I'll end up with an old house still that's gonna cost me a lot more money, where I could end up doing it to where it would be up to codes. It's going to have, um, there's no insulation in it now. And it needs, oh, the wiring, plumbing, it needs everything. It's, it's just in really bad shape. And the further I got looking at it, the worse it was. So since there's such a diversity in that one particular block, I, I just think it would be a good investment to tear it down and build something that will fit the neighborhood. And Randy already has several, um, plans that he suggested that if you allow demolition, then we can go ahead and, and then come back to you and let you look at these other plans. But right now, um, it's not safe. It's not safe at all. And, um, I've got everything turned off, except I got one, one plug that's hot, but the rest of it I was concerned about and all. But I didn't have time, I took a lot of things and made copies for you all. I've got one more demolition estimate here, and then I have three other contractors. I've gone through the ones that said, lady, tear this thing down to, um, you know, well, we'll go ahead and do it, but their price was prohibitive. So what they've done, they've given me their business cards with their, with their bids on it. But they don't really wanna do it, but they said if we did, that's what it would cost.
So these are bids to refurbish?
Well, the bids that are on their business cards, they don't wanna do it. But they said if it had to be done, they didn't think it could be done for less than that. There is one fellow there that said he'd do it for a hundred and forty thousand. But I'm thinking, considering what everybody else has said, I'd wanna check anything he's done first. These others, I know what their work is and, you know, that they're reliable. And Randy, Randy has built the house on Manny and Burton for me, and he's also rehabbed the, um, the big building down there where Whiskey Dix is. And, um, he's rehabbed the Old Scolar Building, which is temps, the hard rock place. He rehabbed that. He helped, he's helped on a number of things, and he helped on the house that I'm in now on, uh, College and Highland. So I've got a great deal of faith. Go ahead. The what?
The old store that was leaning?
Oh, yeah, well, he could tell you, the old Dunaway store across from Steve's, my son's house. He was able to save that, and it was, it was way out of Kildare, but he managed to, you know, wire it across. And now Linda Stevens has done a great job. She has the stairs and everything in it. But, uh, I feel confident with Randy with what he's doing. But these other people, um, well, the one, the estimate that I just gave you from Gwen Park, he's worked for me off and on for twenty years. And he said, you know, this is about as low as I can get for a demolition. He said, it's just gonna cost you too much. So that's what I'm asking for right now. Can I demolish it? I'm gonna have different setbacks, I'm aware of that. Randy's aware of it, he's got several really interesting plans that we could use. And to rebuild it will cost about the same or less than it would to tear it down and have a new house.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board at this point?
Most of my questions are for the staff at this point. I may, because, uh, in the procedures, it's, um, she's obviously making the request based on economic hardship, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Why didn't you?
That would be y'all's opinion.
She's making a request on economic hardship.
And, um, there are some suggested guidelines, seven of them, on pages six and seven of the procedures on making that determination. Okay? And, um, my first question would be, did anyone from Building Codes take a look at? Did you, you looked at, you've been in the house yourself?
I went out with the Building Codes, uh.
You did go with the Building Codes person and?
He says that it is not to the point of, uh, where it needs to be, what's the word I'm looking for?
Uninhabitable.
Uninhabitable.
Okay.
But, but it doesn't meet codes.
It doesn't not meet codes.
It doesn't meet codes, but it doesn't, like I say, it's not uninhabitable.
Correct, okay. It's, um.
Can I say something real quick? When he says it doesn't meet codes, it doesn't meet codes, but it's got the original knob and tube wiring. Half of those wires are still active, but they haven't been replaced. The, the whole roof system needs to come down. It's not only because it's two-by-fours that are overspanned, it's got four layers of roofing on it, including the original cedar shake shingles, but the fire has eaten through the two-by-fours to the point where they're no longer, they're no longer holding the roof, that they've got braces underneath it to try and brace it in place. If those braces for some reason fall, which are, which are improper braces, to begin with, not on load-bearing walls, if those should give way, the whole roof is at the point where a strong wind could pull it down. It's, it's, you know, it's four times, it was four layers of roofing on it, including the original cedar shake timbers. It was never engineered to hold that kind of weight. It's, it's.
Correct.
Really overdone to the point. And then as far as the crawl space, being a foot off the ground, there's not really a way to get under there and to shore it up without, as if you go to my, my cost breakdown. I broke everything down step by step, I mean, cost line item by line item, showing what it would take, even to the point where we'd have to cut floor, holes in the floor to get under in order to run the plumbing, to do everything like that. When you're thinking, and this house, really, the only thing that's salvageable from the house would be the outside walls. The windows need to be replaced, they're no longer effective. They, the, really, the outside wall in the front, because the right-hand side of the house, the foundation has failed to the point where you've got three inches of fall from the entry door to the right-hand corner of the home. That'll have to be lifted up, and the only way to lift that up would be to dig down, put a new footer in there, lift the house up, put a new foundation and set it back down. I mean, if it comes to the point, you know, architecturally, we could have James and Associates draw the same facade on the house and put it in there. But if the house comes even like that, but the, the house is wider than current setbacks. There's a fifteen-foot setback, it's a fifty-foot wide lot, so it limps us to a thirty-five-foot wide home, which, which I've, I've come up with, there's quite a few plans that would kind of fit in the neighborhood. But really, the best part of that house, there's a really cool exterior door that's inside the house to the bathroom that could be put on the front of the house. And there's a couple of really, really good mantles that could be saved. But, um, other than that, that's the only historic thing on this house.
Okay, well, thank you. I was really trying to make some determination of what's in here in the guidelines with the, uh, with the staff regarding who, who, was there another party that went into the home and made some kind of evaluation? And so he, he was answering that question about Building Codes, and that's where I was headed, was that it is habitable, but it's, uh.
It's not bad enough to be condemned, that's, that was the word.
Right, it's not, not bad enough to be condemned, so.
Well, it seems to, you know, just to me as an aside, you know, it's, if it doesn't meet any codes, it's hard to believe who would wanna live in it to begin with. So I mean, I'm sort of.
That was definitely the wrong word. It does not yet meet the criteria that Building Codes would try to condemn it. But, you know, it certainly doesn't, it appears to be habitable in its current condition.
Let me phrase it a different way then. Uh, when, when the Building Codes went out there and they said if, uh, they were to take out a building permit to do some remodeling, then Building Codes would expect them to bring it up to today's code standards for electrical, plumbing, structural, in the, in the items that he went over. And so that, that would be the case, correct? I mean, if you took out a building permit to do a remodeling.
Sure, yeah, it would have to meet.
Because we, I've dealt with it on another home where you might get one room satisfied per codes, but maybe not the whole structure. And in this case, it's, uh, doesn't appear that there's any part of it that could be remodeled and, and get a CO, 'cause that's what's in here. You know, what would it take to get a, you know, what I'm referring to, to get a certificate of occupancy? Uh, although it says, it doesn't say that, it says, uh, certificate of appropriateness. However, to get that, you've gotta first have a CO, correct? Okay. So we do have a qualified person from Building Codes who's certified, who's gone into the home and observed it and said it's not, you know, it doesn't meet codes today.
Right.
Okay. So to get a building permit and to get the CFO, you see where I'm asking is, it would have to meet that criteria for wiring, safety, and whatever else is in the building.
Life safety, yeah.
Yeah, and the roof supports, like you mentioned, would have to, you'd pretty much be taking that down because of the, uh, it's not structurally competent to handle the roof system.
While you're on the roof, if you put that picture back up from the rear of the house, then look at that roof line as it is now. Pretty shocking.
So, um.
That's right.
Going, going back to the criteria that's in, that we, or it says, obviously, that we may consider any or all of these things. It doesn't say shall, okay? It just says may. And I'm kind of going through there, kind of, so I'm down past two now. You know, I'm going down to three on page six, okay? And, uh, And, uh, number three is asking about the estimated market value of the property in its current condition. Of course, we don't have a report from an appraiser or anyone to that effect, but we do have the, the tax. That's why I wanted to go back to that sheet. It says it's, uh, the target's market appraisal value is seventy thousand dollars. Well, sometimes these things are incorrect. But there, and I don't know the last time it was reviewed by the property assessor's office, but, um, uh, and we don't know, we haven't asked what she paid for the property or if she got an appraisal done. By chance, did you get an appraisal done, Ms. Boffman?
I'm sorry?
By chance, did you get an appraisal done on the property for any reason?
On this one I just bought?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I just bought it at auction.
Okay.
I buy things at auction.
Do you know how much you paid for it, Mary?
Oh, I, I paid a pretty good price for that narrow lot. I paid, well, right now I have a hundred and three thousand into it. I paid, by the time I got the ten percent, it was ninety-nine thousand.
So you paid, you paid ninety-nine thousand and then paid a, uh, a ten percent on top of that?
That's included.
No, no, that counted. I paid ninety thousand plus ten percent. And then the rest is closing costs. And what I've done just to get rid of the debris and stuff up-
So basically you paid ninety-nine thousand dollars for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Rick, uh, you mentioned some page numbers. You're talking about the guidelines. Oh, I, I couldn't find what you were referring to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, it was in what we got and sent, it was, uh-
Yeah, but I have here, so I'm looking at, uh, there's another section maybe, um, that, I, I was looking at this one, which is a little different. And this is, uh, Guidelines for Alterations, Additions, Demolitions and Removals.
Right, that was sent in the package.
Huh?
That was sent in the agenda package.
Okay.
Wasn't included was the rules of procedure.
Okay, okay. So I'm looking, I'm looking at a different package, or a different, uh, that I got in the mail. And if you look at page, um, I don't know if you have this document or not. It's called, uh, Guidelines for Alterations, Additions, Demolitions and Removals. And, um, if you look on page thirteen of that document, there is a section on demolitions. And I think, uh, you know, obviously it's a historic building. It's, uh, it is a contributing structure, is that correct, to the historic district?
The, when the, the list was done back in nineteen eighty-five, it was a contributing structure and it still is a contributing structure.
So it's a contributing structure and it, it, it does add to the historic nature of the district. And anytime we remove a historic structure, our historic district loses a little bit. And I, and I understand, of course, uh, uh, living in Steve's backyard, or I live in his backyard, or he lives in my backyard. Uh, I, I've bought a house downtown in two thousand and two. And I think I, at this point, I have now spent more on fixing it than I spent to buy it. And that's continuing because somebody's working in there today. But, uh, so that's just the nature of historic buildings. They do cost money to maintain. And if you look around downtown right now, you see a lot of work going on in both inside the his, well, more outside the historic district or bordering the historic district. Uh, you've done work on your house and, uh, all up and down Manny and Church and Spring Street. People are, are, uh, buying and fixing houses and the property values are increasing. So the return on investment right now may be improving. Who knows how long the real estate market will stay like that? Uh, that's a risk that we all take. But, uh, I, I, I think what I was getting, I want to just get to this point about demolition in the, in our guidelines. It says that since the purpose of historic zoning is to protect historic properties, the demolition which contribute, of a building which contributes historically and architecturally to the character and significance of the district is inappropriate and should be avoided. However, it goes on to say that if it's not, uh, economic, I mean, there's some other, uh, demolition is appropriate when it's lost its architectural and historical integrity. Or when it does not contribute, so that doesn't apply. It does contribute to the historic nature of the district. And the, another reason for, uh, not, or for allowing it to be torn down would be that the denial of demolition will result in an economic hardship on the applicant. So those, that's the, those I think are the, the guidelines that we're looking at in, in regard to demolishing a building. As opposed to whether or not it meets any codes. That's really, uh, not relevant because there are a lot of street, houses on College Street that don't meet codes. And if we were to go into them, we would, you know, if, if somebody were to do some repair, uh, and get a permit, they'd have, they'd find they were doing a lot more work than they planned on working.
Yeah, and for myself, I was trying to determine item three. Okay? Is it truly an economic hardship? Okay? Value in there or not in there? Since we had been provided with this to do that. And I think that's-
Well, what is, what would be the, the, you have three estimates, uh, for repairing the house. And they're kind of all over the map. The lowest is one forty.
Would you come to the podium, please?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. Now, the one I enclosed, I enclosed in the package that Mary passed out today, the detailed scope of work right there and everything. And I'm in there, it's about two hundred and three thousand.
Two hundred and three.
And I'm familiar with these projects. I just did one, um, very similar to this one, uh, near the racetrack in, in downtown Nash, in Nashville. You know, the fairgrounds area over there? And, uh, the biggest problem is that the right-hand side of the house, well, besides, the, the whole roof's got to come off and be rebuilt. And the right-hand side of the house is going to have to be torn down and foundationed up. There really, if we did save that house, the living room would probably be the, the, about the only place that's not, that's not wonked. And the bathroom was built on the porch, as far as, you know, architecturally, if you look at the porch, it was a wraparound porch, but sometime after it was built, they came in and built a bathroom on the porch. They enclosed the porch. So the bathroom has a two-inch fall in the floor. You know, which is common in older homes where they would have sunrooms and porches and someone would just enclose them and add a toilet and a sink. And that was the bathroom. But that's the bathroom for the entire house is, is built onto the porch. As far as wanting to keep it, you know, historically and, and upon mark, since the whole thing has to be rebuilt, I mean, it wouldn't be hard to, to work with Steve over at James and Associates to get this same, the same look, just rebuild it. But it'd have to be built, it couldn't be the same size because again, even if we remodel it, it's going to be bigger than Codes allows. Because it's only a fifty-foot wide lot. And they have a fifteen-foot setback, total setback on each side, however you balance it. But it's going to be fifteen foot of setback. That would leave thirty-five foot for the width of the house.
We, we might ask for variance.
At that point, we could ask for a variance and thing. But, but as far as keeping, if you want to keep that style, that's not the problem. But everything in there needs to be redone. So basically it would, it would look the same, but nothing would be the same.
I think, uh, what, what we would be concerned about is the exterior appearance. And also, uh, uh, we would permit, you know, appropriate addition on the rear of the building if there was room on the rear. That's another option that would be available. So, uh, generally around the country in historic districts, property values are higher than outside historic districts. So you, over the long term, may see value added because of the fact that it is a historic building and it's in the historic district.
And I understand, and I think that's great, but in that particular block, there's nothing but multifamily. There's historic homes that have been converted to three and four units. Even the home next door to the left of it is converted to a duplex. I mean, there, there are no single-family residents on that street. Mary's trying to come in there-
Linda, Linda has one that's very modern and it's, you know, it's unusual and completely different than anything that's there. But it's a big addition. I have to say, it's probably the-
Is, is this property currently used as single-family residence?
Yeah.
Uh, it was, yeah.
It was, okay. And its zoning classification today is?
Hers is quite modern.
RS eight, I think, RS eight or RS ten or something. It's a single-family zone.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not arguing, you know, like, if, if you want to put in, she'll be into it a little over three hundred thousand by the time it's done for a, for a, how many square foot is that, Mary?
Right now it has a thousand and fifty-two square feet.
A thousand and fifty-two, that would put it over three hundred dollars a square foot in order to make that habitable and, and as a decent home.
And there's no, no garage.
And you can ask the real estate, well, what are they going for a square foot in that area?
What is the, uh, what exterior?
Not three hundred a square foot for a thousand.
No, no, we haven't topped a hundred and seventy-five.
A hundred and seventy-five, so she would be in it twice as much as the going rate. Almost twice as much. It would cost her twice as much to save that. The thing, it just doesn't, it, it just, it's not feasible. You couldn't rent it out and cover the note.
I'd like to-
Go ahead, Jim, Bill.
Add just a little something to this discussion. You've mentioned setback a couple of times and I wanted to make the board or the commission aware that this fifty-foot lot, the, neither of the driveways on either side of this structure belong to this structure. The one on the right of the home goes with the home to the right. The one on the left goes to the home on the left. So street parking is the only option for this home. And, 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 and from a historic neighborhood perspective, that's fine. But from the use and the functionality of this building moving forward, you're looking at street parking for the life of the structure. That's, that's the only option. Unless someone comes in and buys the other lots and somehow ties these together. I see that as, as functional obsolescence. That's, that's going to, that's, that's hurting this property moving forward because it doesn't, uh, contribute to modern needs.
Well, as an end result, I could just leave it as is with property value going up and, um, you know, eventually get my money back plus more. I'm, you know, I'm well aware of what property value is there. But I don't, I, I want to fix up that block.
Right, and, and, you know, the-
There's this next door that's in worse shape than mine is. And hopefully, maybe I may come back and want to do that one too. But one thing at a time.
The one next door that is worse shaped than hers is actually not that bad structurally. That one, that one would be a good one to go in and fix up. That one is, it's got a driveway, it's structurally sound. It's, uh, it, it needs, you know, updating. I mean, it's been abandoned for, for four or five years, but it's empty now as a matter of fact, but-
We share a driveway with that. We have a shared driveway.
That's what they were explaining right now.
That is, the house, as you face it to the right, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, it's the one, if you're facing the house, the one to the right of it. That's, that's an empty house, the blue one there. And it hasn't, if you look at that wraparound porch, that's, that's the sister of this house. That is how this house is supposed to, to look. But they didn't add, they didn't put their bathroom on the front porch. They, they put it someplace else.
When do you plan to buy that house, Mary?
One thing at a time.
You, uh, you're, you remember one, one street, one block at a time, and that was the block, I believe, correct? Some years ago? And, and given the nature of change in downtown, and the fact that there's not a driveway for the house doesn't change the historic nature of the house.
Right.
So the question before us is, is it a historic structure and is it worth saving? And is it economic? And if it's not economic, then that is an appropriate reason to demolish it. But what I'm suggesting is that the long-term future of downtown, and, and, and it's been going on now for some time, is rising property values. And it appears to me, and I heard there was a house that sold on Manny for two hundred a square foot. Hasn't closed yet. But it's going to. Maybe.
One of the other things that I don't know if you're aware of or not, a couple of months I'm going to be ninety and I'm going to have to be downsizing. So this would be a great downsizer for me and I'd be in the same neighborhood. My granddaughter's behind me, Steve's just around the corner. My granddaughter's mother-in-law lives right behind where I am now. And I would have a nice big house for sale where I am now. And it's already been fixed up, so-
I believe she's offering her house to y'all. At a discounted rate, you know, Mary, she just doesn't stop.
She buys the whole block. I mean, we, we know that the block is going to be fixed up, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I think there's something else we need to be looking at in our information and when we're, um, talking about possible demolition. And that is on page fourteen of our guidelines. And I know Gibb has been referring to this, but it, just let me, let me read it to you. "Demolition is appropriate when a building has lost its architectural and historical integrity and importance, and its removal will not result in a more negative, less appropriate visual effect on the district." Now, that's the one that draws my attention for this property. It has lost, I think, Gibb, its historical appropriateness because it's been let go so long. And I wish there was some way we could keep that from happening in our historic neighborhood so that these, these landlords don't get away with, with no repair and no maintenance. But that's what's, what's happened. And, and that's the first one. And that's the one that draws my attention as far as reasoning, what are we going to do about this?
Uh, in response to that, I would say, uh, look at Oakland's mansion in nineteen fifty compared to today. An old building can fall into disrepair and can be brought back. I think that the clear argument for demolition is the one regarding economic hardship. I, I think that that building, the way it looks now after taking the asphalt siding off, I think the possibilities are amazing. I think it can be repaired, it could be brought back, and it would be a beautiful house and it would retain its historic integrity. I don't think that, that, uh, that would be a good argument for demolition.
Okay.
I've, I've worked in historic sites around the country and seen buildings that were in awful shape. In fact, I, I scraped off countless layers of varnish of a historic lighthouse keeper's house. And we brought that building back from, you know, near collapse to a, a beautiful example of a, of a lighthouse keeper's house from the eighteen seventies. So it can be done. And this house, the, the shell of that house is, I think, amazing. And, and that photograph that I'm looking at on the screen right now is, I, I think it's an incredible house. But it may not be worth three hundred thousand dollars. And that's, I think, the argument for demolition.
Let me add, what is the exterior material?
It's wood.
Is it wood?
Wood clap siding, clapboard.
Yeah, I, I've, um, physically walked around the house a couple of times. And I, I see where, where Gibb is coming from, but I also see just a situation that almost seems hopeless. Let me ask you this, Gibb. If the design of the new home was very similar to this current home, would that not keep the appropriateness of that?
It would not have any historic integrity. A new house would not be contributing to the historic nature of the district. It would be a new house in an, in a historic district. But I'm not saying I would-
Yeah.
Uh, not tear it down. I'm just saying that the possibilities are, I think, quite incredible.
Before we end this discussion, um, let me add one other thing. On the three hundred block of East, uh, College, on the south side, we had a fire in a home. And it was obviously more gone than this home. But, uh, but there was a house built there to, to fit the period in, in the neighborhood. It's right beside the, the Nichols House, right behind the Nichols House.
On College Street, the, the house next to them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I, I vaguely, I, do you know about when that was done?
Well, I'm here nineteen years and so it was probably about fifteen years ago, maybe.
I think so.
Ten, twelve, fifteen years, something like that.
Is it next to the Episcopal Church?
But my only point is, uh, is that the, the, the board approved the, uh, the style of the home and the, the, the way, the material and everything that was used.
Right.
And it has, and it has fit very well into the neighborhood.
Well, I don't argue that they can't not do that. And I'm not saying, uh, don't take a vote on it. I mean, we, we have to vote on it. And I'm, I'm fine with, uh, whatever we decide. You know, I'm just suggesting that it is a historic house. And when you remove a historic building from a historic district, you will gradually diminish the historic nature of the district. And ultimately, it could lead to the loss of the historic district.
And I think that's important where you, where you, where you're talking about. And I think that's important, what you're, what you're talking about, Gibb, because if we start something like this, where does that lead us, as far as letting someone demolish a home?
The one thing, too, we talked about it before, we had every intention of getting your approval for new plans, because it is in a historic district, and using materials and proper materials, so there's not vinyl siding, there's not gonna be vinyl windows, it's gonna have, it's gonna have a historic feel to it. You know, it's not, we've even, we've even talked to saving, there's a door in there that's just a beautiful piece of art that, that needs to go back up in front of that house. And we have every intention, I mean, even our plans, the ones I showed Mary, were all cottage-style, this type of period construction. The only difference would be on the inside, that it would, it would have insulation and, and efficient heating in there, and safe electricity, and proper plumbing and stuff. That, that would be our thing, but we, we very, we, we assumed that we had to come back before the board to show them plans until, until we'd met your approval. We have no intention of destroying the neighborhood. Even when I did that house that Mary lived in around Burton and Manny, I went down to the Oakland's mansion and copied their arches that they have around the building, and put that into the, into the building to give it a period look, to the point where people were coming up to Mary and asking her, who restored your home? We really like it, it's, it's great, and it was new construction. And so, we, we try and work with the neighborhood and make it blend in. I don't, I don't want to be the, the, you know, I don't want a redheaded stepchild, but I don't want to be that, that one that sticks out like a sore thumb. We want to blend in, like, even though, we were looking at a building, a 1,500-square-foot home, and it was all gonna be one-story, something that Mary could live in, you know, all one-story with no stairs. Where she's at now, she has the stairs, that she doesn't go up and down the stairs anymore. It's just, you know, again, she's gonna be 90 years old, so this is something, you know, we could put in the, the bathroom, or the shower could be a handicap-style shower, and it'd just, it would just be more suited to someone at this thing. And then, for as far as parking, the, we, we were trying to get the easement and put a garage in the back so that someone could pull in the back and have a side-facing garage in the back of the lot, but it's only 50-foot wide, so we're really kind of limited on what you can do with a 50-foot lot. And we're staring, we're staying away from the McModern's, you know, which are so popular around town, but being in Nashville, a builder in Nashville, I can't stand them anymore. If I see one more house without a gable, I'm gonna, maybe with a deck over the top of the house, I mean, it's just sick. That's why they call them McModern's.
And I had something that, I think what we're doing here is, if you want to do the demolition, that we have to go through the steps of considering the hardship in order for the, the district to be safe. If somebody comes in here and decides that, that we were just demolishing a house by house by house with no respect to, for the district, then, then we do stand a chance of losing the district. But if we go through the steps like we do, like we are, that I think would have an effect on keeping the district like it is, even if we do decide to demolish it, because we're going through pains taking decisions on this, so that needs to be considered when we, when we, when we do this, whatever we do.
One of the last things I would add to this discussion is, other than probably three homes on the far west side of the 300 block of East College, the rest of it has been rental property that, and I don't know who the owners are, but they have not put a nickel back into any of these homes, and it, it really is a detriment to the historic zone, in my opinion. It's, if you walk down that street and look at both sides of it and look what's going on, it's, it's really a shame.
It is.
Any other discussion from the board?
I was looking through your estimate that you gave, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
And the, I was gonna, I'm gonna go back to the exterior materials that are on this home. You said they were wood. How much of that is salvageable on the exterior?
The, the problem is that those nails are, those nails are in, into the 2x4 oak, and it's, it's getting them off, you know what I mean? I'm sure a percentage of it would be salvageable, but, I mean, we do, we could do our best and reuse part of it, but there, it's clapboard siding, and, and back then when they built them, there's no felt behind it, there's no waterproofing, there's no insulation.
Okay.
They're pulling it off, I mean, those nails, if you ever tried to pull the clapboard off, and those nails are in that 2x4, they don't want to go, unless they're rusted through, it's, it's gonna be awful hard to, the wood will split before the nail comes out.
Plus, Rick, the, the asphalt or asbestos, whatever it was on the outside, was nailed into that, that clapboard.
Yeah, the only reason you see the clapboard is because Mary took the, she didn't realize it was, it wasn't the right stuff, the right thing to do, but she went and stripped it before I even contacted her. And then I asked her, I said, what'd you do, Mary? And she goes, well, you know, some kid, you know, he had him hauling off, wanted to see what was underneath it, and I go, well, good for you, huh, but don't do that again. So, you know, way to go, but don't do it again. But, but that was, if you saw the pictures before, and that was when she bought it, she was kind of, you know, she wasn't intending on buying it to tear it down, but because it had all this really cute tin around the foundation and stuff, but when you pulled it off and you saw that there was nothing behind the tin, it was just, and behind the siding, it was to that point where it was, you know, that's where I'm, that was when she called me and said, oh, you need a little help.
I would just like to add that I was agreeing with Linda in some of the direction she was going with, with really dissecting the appropriateness of demolition. And I'm asking myself, is it appropriate? And if this were a standalone project, and I were, I own this house, and I wanted to do what I needed to do, I would want to be able to build what I wanted to build. However, because of the intent of the commission to preserve, you have to continue to go back to looking at every effort to preserve where possible. And I ask myself, based on these three criteria, has the house lost its architectural integrity? It probably has lost some integrity because it is so rundown. Has it lost its historical integrity? And I say probably not so much. It's a historical home, it's been there, it's got a lot of history. It still has and holds that integrity, so there's a little bit of a battle, you know, in and of itself with even that first point. And so, it's just, I just want to say that it's challenging, because I would like for you to be able to build a home that is suitable to you, and it could even be a catalyst to, but is it appropriate to the intent of preservation? And that's where you step back a little bit and ask yourself, even though it's expensive and even though it's challenging, you know, what is the overall intent here, and what precedent do we set? So, I didn't really have a specific direction there, except to just say, it is, it's a, it's a tough situation, and I, I am grateful that you want to improve the block. That in and of itself is very, very admirable. We have to continue to ask what kind of precedent we set, moving forward.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I would move to approve in allowing her to demolish this home, subject to them coming back and approving with the board what would replace this structure.
I have a second.
I would second it so we could open it up for discussion before we vote.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and it's open for discussion.
Well, I think it meets the one criteria that I was trying to establish for the economic hardship. I'm challenged, though, by, it's an historic structure, and whether or not it still has that contribution to the district or not. And that's where I always wanted to know about the exterior siding, you know, can it really be, are we, are we bringing in, we're obviously gonna be bringing in wood material, new material, it's not gonna be the same as the, when it was built. It's gonna be...
We'd plan on doing it following your guidelines, with wood exterior siding and, and the wood windows, too. I mean, we, we, we agree with you on that. I mean, it, nothing tears at my heart more. I've rebuilt some, you know, the ones that they say were failures, you know, I know what you're talking about. I mean, I, I love rebuilding that stuff, but there comes a point, too, when I have to take the whole roof off, not just the, not just the roof, but I don't think you understand, but all the, all the support, the whole thing, everything to it, then, then when you look at it, I mean, what are, what are we saving? I mean, you know, it's gonna be reframed, it's gonna have a new roof, it's gonna have new siding. The siding that's on there, if you look at the left side, is rotted off, so it's like, I get the point and everything, we're trying to preserve it, but other than the floor plan and the, and the elevations in the front of the house, I mean, I...
And the foundation.
No, the foundation is trash, Mary.
I know.
But I mean, but other than the floor plan, I mean, we could, we could, I mean, we could save parts of it. I mean, I don't know how Murfreesboro does on that, we could save one wall and say it's a historic preservation, but, but I'm just being honest with you, there's nothing, I mean, it's very, it's just not worth, I mean, it's not worth saving. I went, I tried my best on it, and when I put the numbers to it, and...
We have a motion and a second, so we're kind of discussing amongst ourselves.
Well, I think, I think the only reason for demolishing is that it's not economic. I think the historic integrity is there, visually, it's, it could be a tremendous addition. Whether someone rents a property or owns it makes no difference in terms of its historicity. That's, that's just how people occupy houses. And so, the whole block, there's an opportunity on that whole block to bring back the block. And I, in the next 20 years, would predict that much of downtown will come back, and this street could be a catalyst for that, along with some of the current landowners around who are fixing up houses all over the place. But I, I, I'm not opposed to you demolishing it, I would just ask that maybe you sit on it for a couple of weeks and see what happens.
Could we please have a rereading of the motion? Because my understanding was the motion, the motion to demolish was based on approval of what was going to be placed there. So, could we please have a re-reading of it, please?
I didn't, I didn't intend, I did not intend for it to be based on any further approval, only that it, that any future plans would be subject to...
Can we have a reading, please?
He's like, the motion to demolish the home.
And then he added in...
Subject to coming back for the new.
Uh-huh. Subject to coming back, so they can't really, in the way that's phrased, in my understanding is, you couldn't demolish it, subject to coming back with proposal, that we would see what was going to be placed there, before we gave permission to demolish.
That was not my intent, so we could rephrase that as necessary. I, the, my point was that the applicant would have to come back before this board to approve any future structure. And I guess that goes without saying, so it's not necessary in the motion. That's required in the district anyway, so that has to happen, doesn't it? Okay.
So, your intent was not to be able to approve what was going to be replacing prior to demolition?
No, no, sorry.
I just need a correction.
Absolutely, sure. I, this building is, is very typical of 1880s, 1890s in downtown Murfreesboro, it's built on piers, the, the tiles in the fireplace are Victorian in, in style. This is just a very common home from that era, and it's been, in my experience, that when you start tearing into these, especially the ones that have been neglected like this, you're gonna continue to find issues. We haven't even found out what the termite damage is inside of this thing yet. The, all of the structural issues, the fact that 50% of this home would have to be torn off and rebuilt, combined with the fact that there is no driveway, doesn't meet the functional needs of today's homeowner or renter, you know, that's what leads me to want to make that motion, that we allow them to demolish this structure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Nay.
The motion carries.
Oh, we're gonna, we're going to do it.
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much, and I think you'll be very pleased with what I do, because it's not gonna be, not gonna be that bad.
Mary, and thank, thank you for taking on a challenge that probably none of us would.
Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
You go to my office and you just go crazy.
We have to approve a calendar for 2018.
Okay.
Did y'all, y'all got a calendar?
Oh, yes.
Move we approve the calendar.
Second.
All in favor of the new calendar?
Aye.
Not in favor? Motion carries. Anything else, Robert?
I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
You think we're gonna be in trouble?
We are adjourned.
Happy holidays.